Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board Meeting of Monday, August 14th, 2023. Please note, this meeting is also available on Zoom at the link noted at the top of the agenda. We will open the meeting with a roll call. Sherri Quirk? Mike Baptiste? Jane Gleason? Sam Corbett? Carl Schultz? Here. And Michael King, the chair. We have a full board. Preliminary business. Did everybody get a chance to read the meeting minutes of 6:12 and 6:26 of 2023? I'll take this. Yes? No? So I would entertain a... You do? Okay. There's a...
It's a missing word. There's a...
Which one?
On page four of seven on 62623. In the first full paragraph.
Yep.
Jane Gleason further questioned the resultant, and there's no word after that, or there's more words, but there's no subject. The predicate, the modifier.
Jane Gleason further questioned what the result would be.
If you could add the word byproduct in there, the resultant byproduct. That was my one and only revision.
That was on the 26th. That was it on that?
That's it.
That was pretty big. I don't know. We may want to send these back to Sonya.
Yeah, no, just write it in and we'll sign it.
All right. So...
I move that we approve the minutes of 6:12, 2023, as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Sherri? Mike? Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I move that we accept the minutes of 623, 626, 2023, as amended.
Do we have a second? The motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor? Sherri? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Item two in the preliminary business, 30-19, David and Lisa Matha, 24 Oak Street, special permit extension request. Do we have somebody here for that project?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. If you could identify yourself.
David Mather, M-A-T-H-E-R.
Okay. And you are here requesting an extension of that special permit? That was approved in 2019?
December of 2019, correct. My November was approved, was filed on December 19th of 2019.
I guess my first question would be... Well, I have two questions that pop right to the top. Are you proposing any changes, or is it exactly the same as approved?
Exactly as approved.
And why did it take you three years to come see us?
Just due to COVID delays. The reason why I've just filed now is I was just notified by the engineer that I didn't, we didn't realize that there was a deadline to complete the road. And as soon as we found out, we wrote the letter and asked for the extension.
Yeah, I mean, the COVID end of it, there was a lot of building that went on during COVID, especially in the last year and a half. So I don't know, for me personally anyway, I don't know about the other board members, if that really carries a lot of weight with me. But I would certainly entertain some input from the board.
I have a question. Normally, special permits have to be extended after two years. This is well past two years. Is that correct, Mr. Buckland?
Yes, it is well past two years.
Have we missed the deadline for the extension?
Yes, we have.
Okay. So this would be, if we were to act, it would be certainly a special consideration.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have to take any kind of specific motion to act this late in the game?
No, I think you just have to consider what you'd maybe change in the new decision, the new process you follow.
Okay.
I know. I don't think you're on the board.
I wish not.
Yeah, this was approved in November. You're right, November of 2021. I mean, of 2019.
Yeah, the main issue, well, for me, was my inability to travel due to COVID. And then we had a hard time finding contractors during COVID. And it took us eight months just to get a proposal at that time. And there was just such backlog, we just couldn't get it arranged.
As I said, and don't take this the wrong way, but for me, it doesn't, that doesn't carry a lot of weight because we approved and saw built a ton of stuff in the last three years. So I'm not really sure that that does a lot for me personally. Nope.
I wanted to note that we have had several special permit extensions in front of us with some of those solar projects, and we've been pretty strict with them on the rationale they needed to offer for the extension and doing it in a timely way. And it puts us in a little bit of a bind, I think, here with respect to potential future applications for extensions. If we extend sort of after the fact, sort of alleviates the pressure one might otherwise feel to come in timely for an extension.
I personally would have to agree. I think especially as, I mean, this is closing in on four years. So it's over by a bunch. And I think we would be setting a precedent that might not be a good thing. Because once you do it once, you, you know, the door is open at that point.
Precedent.
Well, I would also ask, how many of the people who were on the board at the time that that was approved are still on the board?
Just two. Mike Baptiste?
Mike and Mike.
Yeah, yeah. None of you were here. So you folks haven't even gotten a chance to look at the plans.
I would be abstaining, and I'm not sure that you would get a quorum to vote in your favor.
Yeah, I would be abstaining also.
Right. It does kind of create a... But I think not having seen the project, not that it's a complicated one, I do remember it. I think the most contentious part of it was concerns from neighbors about runoff on the driveway because of the slope. But I think it was Bill Madden from GAF. Was that your engineer?
Yes, that's correct.
Had done a pretty good job of addressing that. So, but again, I mean, we're four years down the road from the date of approval.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I want to point out is this is a subdivision, not a special permit as well, too. It's the extension of a subdivision.
Right. But again, if we...
Oh, I did, I said, I did say special permit. I'm sorry, I meant subdivision.
In the covenant, it says that there's a rescission of the subdivision if it is not completed in the timeframe.
Of the two years.
Of the two years.
Right. And I think for me, you know, to Sherri's point, you know, we're kind of in a tenuous situation when it comes to granting extensions. And, you know, I know of another subdivision project in town that is two years old that hasn't been built, that I drive by every day. So, you know, if we say yes to this one, you know, how many more people are going to be lined up with old projects that never got done? And coming up and say, well, you did it for, you know, for this project. You have to do it for me. You set the precedent. So, I mean, I, like I said, I personally hate to be the bearer of bad news, especially where it's such a small project. I mean, it's just a driveway and another lot out behind the existing house, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
Yeah. But I think it's the situation that it puts us in that concerns me the most.
I have several process questions before we, before we make, through you to the applicant. Have you pulled the building permit yet?
No, we just completed the plans for the home.
I drove by. There's some construction or tree cutting going on down there. Is that related to your project?
There's some light brush that was being cleared for the road.
How are you doing that ahead of a building permit?
Clearing brush?
Yeah. That's site prep work that's going on ahead of...
Right. Ahead of an approved, while now outdated project.
But theoretically, the first step is to get the building permit, right? Site prep can't start, through you to Mr. Buckland, site prep can't start without the building permit. Is that correct?
That's what the bylaw says, yes.
Yes.
So, so we...
So there's several, there's several concerns about the process here.
But site prep can include the work that's done on the subdivision, but the subdivision isn't in force at this time, so he doesn't have that option available.
Right.
Okay. So what does that mean?
That means that he can't do the site prep at this time without...
Oh, okay. So the site prep is ahead of, that was my conclusion, the site prep is occurring. We've got the horse behind the cart here.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
If this was still in force, then it'd be a different story.
Right.
But it's not.
So my next question, again, a process question, and perhaps through you to Mr. Buckland. If, and I'm not presuming, so please, it's a question, a process question. If we were to deny the extension, what, when could he refile?
He could refile right away.
Okay. So denying the extension would not...
It's not like denying a project.
Not deny the project. He could still, so we could, we could follow the process, be rigorous in the process and not...
Essentially, what you're saying when you, if you deny the extension is that there is no subdivision in place, so he has to follow through the same process again to get a subdivision.
Okay.
But he doesn't necessarily have to redraw his plans. He can still use those plans when he resubmits.
He still uses old plans, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and we could, then this board would get a chance to review the plans.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Okay. These were process questions. Please understand.
Anybody, anything else from anybody?
Nope.
Yeah, I would entertain...
We got a lot of sleaze balls out there. They just look for a crack in the armor, something like this. He's just a victim of circumstance.
It could put us in harm's way, I agree. Okay, so I would entertain a motion on 30-19, David and Lisa Matha, 24 Oak Street, special permit extension request, that the board take a vote to deny based on an outdated approved subdivision plan. I was looking for a motion.
So moved, sir.
All right, okay. Motion with Sherri Quirk, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherri? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam? Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, not looking to put you, you know, in harm's way or anything. It's just, you know, for the best sake of the town, I think it's best that we stick to protocol.
So we just reapply for...
That's right.
Correct. Yep.
Please, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your understanding.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, you had mentioned that there were several other languishing...
There's a project on, if you go all the way down Indian Neck to... What is that road? That if you took a right, would go down to the beach.
I know where you mean.
So you get down, I go past this every morning when I go to the gym. So you get down Indian Neck, take a left, and there's like a five-house subdivision on the left that's been stripped. I think some drainage was put in, and there's been a back-end loader just sitting there for like ever.
Okay. So we have to, on that case, work has begun, assuming that he had a, or the applicant had a building permit. There's some language around substantive progress.
That's right.
I don't know.
There hasn't been any change on that piece of property for well over a year.
Yeah, I don't know...
Know which one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
That's another one of those like good cause substantive progress that's sort of in the eye of the planning board.
Well, I mean, it probably would be the right thing to do to reach out to the developer and let him know that it's been put on the radar, that there's no forward progress being made in what's his situation. Because I wish I could remember his name. I do remember the project. It was like five houses, I think.
David Andrade.
Yes.
Yeah.
But there's been nothing going on there for a long time.
That's not the one next to Whispering Lane or...
Memory Lane.
Memory Lane?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, that's the project?
Yeah, right next door to that. Yep, exactly.
I know the project, I remember the project.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but, as I said, there's nothing going on there.
All right. So is your suggestion that the board ask the planning office to reach out?
I would, yes.
To status?
Do we need to take a vote on that, or is that just general conversation?
It's up to Mr. Buckland. Do you want a motion? Okay, you don't need a motion then.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I remember that project.
Yeah.
Most of this board was here for that.
I, as I remember, it was a very straightforward project, too. There wasn't any real controversy in that one, so...
Well, the controversy was the runoff, running down the hill across the street into the...
Marsh.
The marsh.
Right, exactly. But...
And then the catch basins and maintenance of the catch basins. And I had a real problem with the streetlight.
Yes, yes, I remember that, yep. So the catch basin, the hole's been dug. That's it. Nothing's been done.
Has, I have to drive by it again, but has he put up retaining bales to keep the...
Yes.
Okay, so...
On the marsh side? On the right-hand side of the street as you hit?
Yeah, but also to make sure it's not going to come running down the hill and flood across the street, right?
Well, there's nothing to stop it from going across the street. The bales are on the opposite side.
It'll now stop on the street and... I don't remember what inspections we required on that project. I haven't seen any inspection reports from that.
It's been a while, so... Okay, all right, so that's good. So the planning office will reach out to him. Next up, 3921, Warren Q. O B Z L L C, 59 Main Street, minor modification request. Do we have somebody here for that project? We don't? That's kind of odd. That's all I have, Danny.
Everything he does gets rubber stamped anyway.
What's that?
I said, a lot of things he does in town, he thinks he has privileges.
Well, I don't know if we can act on something that we don't have the proponent to answer questions.
There's been nothing but minor modifications since that project started.
Yep. With the lack of representation for the project, I would entertain a motion that the board take no action on this.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And Carl? And the chair votes aye. What action would that be? I don't know what we'd do.
So I voted no. We didn't have any discussion, but what I was going to ask is what action could we take? I mean, I'm not saying we stopped the project, but what's going on? I don't know.
I don't, I mean, what I know about it, it would be nice if there was someone here to answer questions, but from what I understand, and maybe Ken, you can weigh in, is he is just looking to not build the mariner office and not put the Conex building that was going to be the ice cream store.
That's right.
And the pavilion? Is he not building the pavilion?
I don't think he's, I don't think his plan is to build anything past what you see right now.
Just existing, yeah.
Right.
That doesn't, for one, that doesn't sound like a minor modification to the plan. Also, as I remember, there were, and I have to go back and research it, we did not fully approve the entire project. We gave him permission, and this is, I'm speaking from memory, we gave him permission to move forward with the restaurant, and there were conditions remaining on the other half of the permit.
Correct. He would have had to come back to us for the rest of the project. And we gave him that condition, I think, because there was a time crunch on getting building ordered, or else it was going to be a big increase in price.
Right.
Yep, so...
So my question would be, that doesn't sound like a minor modification, but also being as that half of the project wasn't approved, if he's actually not going to do that, can't he just withdraw the second half of the project? And that doesn't require us to do anything, right?
He could withdraw. That's what he's doing right now, actually, with his minor modification.
Well, I don't, I don't see...
How come no one's here to talk to us?
I don't know. I guess they figured they could do it with remote control.
Okay, well...
I mean, I like Dan, and I love the project, but we've already held people's feet to the fire about not showing up for a meeting to discuss what's on the agenda. So I think we should continue with that policy, so...
Everything on the pavilion was around, all them other two buildings in there. And I don't think it's fair to the people and us to just go and says, okay, you don't have to do that. You can do whatever, leave it open.
Yeah, okay. I've got to go back and review the original progress. I don't remember...
I'm right with you.
If there were things that he was going to do that would make the parking lot and the restaurant flow better, I just, I remember it was presented as an integrated plan.
Yep.
And I don't know what the implications are of chopping it in half. There may be, it may be minor, but without...
There was two minor modifications, and when he came the last time or before that, we told him we were going to look at nothing else till we finished what he was working on first.
Right, okay. So I'm going to still vote no, but the applicant will have to come back and explain before we...
All right. So the recorded vote is five ayes, one nay to not take action and invite the applicant back in so that we can take another swing at this. Okay, moving on. Public hearings, zoning bylaw articles being proposed by the planning board for presentation for town meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we take items one through seven as a single...
As a single agenda item?
A single agenda item, because I think the way we're going to present it is to, this all evolved, and Sherri's going to do the lead, but this all evolved from a...
From a single...
From a single starting point, I think.
So...
So I move that we take the agenda items as a...
As a group, okay. Do we have a second?
I can.
No fight?
Sam got it.
We have a motion by Carl, seconded by Sam. All in favor to take the seven bylaws as listed under public hearings, zoning bylaw articles being proposed as a single discussion? Say aye. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, Sherri, it's all yours.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Before we let Sherri speak, we need to open the public hearing. And I don't, I think there's seven public hearings I think we need to open.
So we need to take a vote to open all seven?
Is that, that's correct, right? Ken, you posted as seven, seven items or one item?
No.
It was, it was one public hearing for all seven items.
Okay, so we only need to open one public hearing.
All right, so I make, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the zoning bylaw articles being proposed as listed in the agenda. Read what?
The notice into the record.
Do we have the notice?
Ken, do you have? All right. I move that we forego reading of the notice into the hearing because the chair doesn't have it.
Okay. I can, if it'll clarify the record, I can read the, all seven articles one by one, just kind of get it on the record.
Okay.
All right, so to the request for a motion to open the public hearing discussion on zoning, zoning bylaw article three, updates to section 320, 330, and 340 to be consistent with changes to site plan and special permit amendments to solar bylaw, amendments to wireless communications bylaw, and a new battery storage B E S S bylaw. Number two, zoning bylaw article five, amendments to section 590, also adding a new section dealing with battery storage, B E S S. Zoning bylaw article 12, remove section 1216.9, which excludes special permit from all of article 12. Zoning by law article 14, rewrite so that it focuses only on the administrative process for land use permitting. Zoning by law article 15, rewrite so that it explains land use permit reviews and criteria for decisions. Zoning by law article 16, update to certain definitions, including terms included in other proposed bylaws. Zoning by law article five, section 540, and article three, wireless communications, colocation on cell towers bylaw. So I've written into the record, I've requested the motion to act to open the public hearing.
I move that we open the public hearing as read by the chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's all you.
Okay. Well, no, but I'm happy to start. We were going to show a presentation. Can we get that on the screen? While they're getting that squared away, I just want to mention that the last time I did a presentation, it was criticized for the print being too small. So I may have overcorrected this time. You all can be the judge of that.
This is what I had, the... No, no, I guess, but the content's missing.
We can get started as they're getting that set up.
Went that way?
You know, as you can see from this list, we have a number of bylaws that we're presenting for a public hearing and review. And just have to say that this has been a bit of a journey, which is an overused term. But we have tried to do quite a bit here, and so it ends up with quite a bit being put in front of you. And it's really important to reiterate that as much work as this is, we're not done. This is just a midpoint because we're, you know, working in areas that are rapidly evolving, and we're, you know, continuous evolving of the bylaws and rules and regulations are going to be necessary. Now, just need to mention that for as much as I may talk tonight, which won't be everything, but part of it, I have to mention that Carl was really heavily involved in this. Julie Moran, who's in the audience and is an enthusiastic volunteer, was also involved. And Ken Buckland has been involved, you know, pretty much every step of the way with us. So, and would also mention that Julie is an actual real estate attorney, which, if I haven't made this clear before, I am not. So very helpful to have the expertise of somebody who works in this area. Now, I wanted to just give you a roadmap right up front because it's a little bit of a daunting spectacle here. We've got articles 14, 15, and 16, which deal mainly with land use permits, various types of land use permits, site plan review special permits, site plan review special permits, and set forth, you know, various standards that apply to these permits. So we've looked at all of these and what we've tried to do is to clarify which, uh, land use permits apply to what, uh, actions potentially to be taken in town. Because in, in the past, it has not always been clear in all cases. And we wanted to make the bylaws better organized, more understandable, easier to follow for people who are, you know, coming in either trying to develop things or trying to figure out what the parameters of development are. We wanted to simplify this by moving, um, a number of sections into the rules and regulations. And the, the idea there is that the bylaws need to go to town meeting when we revise them. And, um, that is, um, a long process. And it, um, is a difficult process. With rules and regulations, we can adapt them to meet changing circumstances and adapt them by simple, uh, majority vote of the planning board or the Z B A if they are, uh, the board in charge. And that, uh, is just simpler, easier, um, and allows us to keep pace. Now, all of this, the, um, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, they create changes and uses and permits. And, um, who is looking at what in what proceeding? All of this sort of comes home to roost in the use table, which is if you look through our zoning bylaws, it's the multi-page version that has, um, uh, basically zoning, zoning areas at the top and uses on the side. And by going there, you can look at what you can do where through, by using what process. And what we've done is to take the various, uh, changes that have been, uh, made in other parts of the bylaws and brought them home to roost in article three. Very important part of the bylaws. Now, should also mention before we talk a bit more about, uh, site plan review and special permits, we've done some work on, uh, the solar bylaw, which is currently before the Attorney General for review. We have not received comments back from the Attorney General. What we wanted to do, uh, was, um, in advance of that review, to key up the possibility that we would at this town meeting make further changes to the solar bylaw, uh, if we get the review back in time. And if there's time enough before town meeting and the processes, uh, kick in so that we could make changes. The bylaw that you see in this packet is largely the same as the one that was passed at Springtown meeting in, uh, twenty twenty-two. We made some changes to it. Um, and I have a red line of those changes, if anybody would like to see those exact changes. But it's very similar to what was passed. And just going to be raising some questions with you all about what else we might want to be considering doing. So, um, if we could go to the next page, that would be good. Now, there are basically two kinds of land use permits under, um, our zoning bylaws. One is a special permit, the other is site plan review. And special permit is essentially use, uh, that, uh, needs to be identified on the use table and is something that's special or unique or a little bit out of the ordinary, uh, for the zone in which it is being proposed. Uh, one of its distinguishing characteristics, we've seen this in, uh, the, uh, the solar projects, is, uh, the planning board can deny a special permit. They can decide that a use is not compatible with, uh, a zoning, um, region or a neighborhood and decide that they're going to deny a special permit. Site plan review, I think that's on the next slide if memory serves me, yes. Site plan review is different. Site plan review is what we call an as-of-right use. And what that means is that, uh, the planning board is entitled to review, a site plan review, uh, and it can condition it in order to achieve objectives and standards set forth in the zoning bylaw. But it cannot deny a site plan review. It must only condition it. And its conditions can't be such that it's, you know, a denial, um, you know, in the guise of conditioning. Now, um, we've, you know, seen the argument before the planning board by one applicant in one of our solar, um, proceedings, that, uh, site plan review is all that is required for, uh, solar projects, the large ground mounted solar projects. And he has done, um, an analysis of our zoning bylaws to support this conclusion. Our conclusion is we have a longstanding interpretation of our authority with respect to, uh, large ground mounted solar projects and, and other, uh, types of projects. And we have looked at them as, uh, and tried to decide whether to, um, award site plan review special permit. So we have melded the two together into one kind of review that is, uh, that is both reviews sort of, um, uh, blended together. And, uh, so, and this is a longstanding interpretation. It's not something that we decided to do in one case because of, uh, the circumstances there. It is a longstanding interpretation. We have, um, met with, as I think we've referenced in planning board before, we've met with town council on this. And town council has, uh, affirmed the planning board's interpretation of site plan review special permit. But has suggested that we clarify, uh, the bylaw, the zoning bylaw in order to make it clear, um, or as lawyers sometimes say, uh, for the avoidance of doubt. So, uh, a lot of what we've done through here is to separate out these two processes, have them as two separate, uh, separate, uh, sorts of entities. And, um, and so we have now two separate provisions that deal with site plan review and special permit. Uh, the other thing that we've done here is to strengthen, uh, the process in several ways. One way that we've strengthened the process, uh, is to make clear that, um, I'm sorry, could we go to the next? Next, okay. Tried to make clear that, um, with these different processes, the planning board will not begin its review until the application is complete. So, um, you know, we've had instances, for example, where applicants have come in with incomplete applications. And we've ended up as a planning board spending a lot of time identifying what was incomplete, telling them what we thought was needed, seeing whether at the next meeting they came in with what we had asked for. Then, you know, finding something else that was missing. And it's really gone on for, you know, a long period of time. And so what we're trying to do here is to make sure the application is complete before we begin. We've also, uh, put in some better definition of performance guarantees. And this really, uh, you know, I think has come out of our discussion in the solar cases where we've spent time talking about guarantees and the importance of guarantees in order to get, uh, performance completed on, uh, site plan review or special permit. So we put in some more definition here, uh, in order to make sure that when something is given permission to, uh, be built, it in fact, uh, is built and we have some kind of assurance that it is. Now, another, um, consideration that we have, and this is in, uh, in the bylaw as it's written now, we have put in a section on design review. And, uh, I expect that that section is going to go into the, um, rules and regulations. Something we're still working on, trying to work out, uh, whether and how to have site plan, um, design review. Something that, uh, is in the, um, rules and regulations for the downtown redevelopment zone. And so there's, uh, something to work on there. But in that process, we hope to bring in more considerations of sustainability, environmental issues, and really keep pace, sustainability, um, in the sense of sea level rise as well, keep pace with how the world is changing around us and how technology is changing around us. And then, uh, we're, we've taken actually quite a bit out of the zoning bylaws and put them in the rules and regulations, put those provisions in the rules and regulations again to allow for flexibility and for, uh, more nimble changes as, um, as we're going forward. Chair?
Why, why, Chair?
Yeah, and identify yourself.
Julie Moran. I just wanted to add that we've, um, we really look at the rules and regulations. That's an integral part of the bylaw. And so we've made, we're being careful as we amend, as we go forward with the, uh, iterations of what you're seeing before you to, uh, reference the rules and regulations. They really give applicants a roadmap. Bylaws are the law, but the roadmap is really the rules and regulations. And it really gives us, we think the plan, it gives the planning board and the town more flexibility. And, and really, I think, helps an applicant understand the process in a way that maybe it may help, um, eliminate some of the confusion sometimes, some of the delays in front of the planning board, um, as a result, so.
Good, thank you. Now, next, we go to the next slide. What really came home to us is that, uh, some of the confusion, some of the arguments made by, uh, developers found their root in the use table, this, you know, multi-page, um, you know, set of uses and, uh, zoning, um, you know, zones. And so we spent, uh, time going over the use table, segregating out site plan review, special permit, delineating, uh, whether one or both was needed. In fact, both are needed for solar projects. And delineating which permitting authority was going to look at, uh, those applications so that we would have a simple way to identify the authorizations needed and who would be, um, uh, who would be looking at it. And I should also say, uh, one of the things we tried really hard to do is to leave the Z B A alone, to really do nothing with their authority, to really focus on the planning board. Uh, our theory being that if they want to change their authorities, uh, you know, that's, that's really up to them. We're not going to rewrite the zoning bylaws that govern them. So we go to the next page. And so the, the goal of this was all really to have a better integration of the zoning bylaws, the use table, and to have everything to sort of sing together, at least in harmony, if not actually sing together so that, uh, we wouldn't have the, or we would have less potential for arguments by people coming in and saying, but you say this here and that there. And so, uh, we're going to argue that you don't have an authority that you think you have, which is what we've heard. Okay, next, please. Now with the solar bylaw, we're, um, in an interesting spot there because it's still under review by the Attorney General. The Attorney General's review is supposed to be completed by, um, September nineteenth. And, uh, but we don't know yet whether it's been accepted, revised, or what is, uh, likely to happen with that. So we are, um, fingers crossed, holding our breaths, hoping that, um, that whatever comes through will be an acceptance to minor changes. If there are, uh, manageable changes, uh, we're going to, uh, see if we can put those in an amended bylaw and bring it to town meeting and, uh, and get it through, uh, at the end of October. Uh, you know, I think that the solar bylaw represented a lot of really good work by people. And, you know, as I was looking it over, other than separating out site plan review and special permit and a few other little tweaking things that, uh, that I thought might be worth considering, didn't want to do too much to it at this point. However, you know, we did a couple of things. Um, we're thinking about a couple of things. One is whether to require a notice of change in ownership. And I know we've talked about this in our planning board meetings before. And, um, I at least think it would be a good idea, uh, with projects of this size and with the obligations that run with them over the duration of time that they do, that are subject to ownership changes as, uh, solar projects are, that we know who we're doing business with and who owes what obligation to us. As I look at the bylaws of, of surrounding towns, um, I see changes in ownership being required in many of those. And so I think it makes sense to require this and to require assumption of, uh, liabilities and obligations by an owner coming in. Spent some time thinking about whether we should delay consideration of a solar project until we have a signed interconnection agreement. And I think that's, that's worth talking about. Couple concerns that I have developed over that. One is if, um, if a solar developer has a signed interconnection agreement, it's got a pretty good head of steam behind it at that point. It's, um, it has, um, knows what the cost of interconnection is going to be, has assumed certain obligations, has expended certain funding. And, um, uh, and that's a, uh, pretty big commitment. And, uh, I think it's worth thinking about that. And whether, uh, whether it's a better idea for us to weigh in earlier when we may have more latitude and flexibility to affect the project and how it's being developed. So that's, that's one thought. And really wanted to get thoughts from people, uh, from the public about what we could do better here. I know that, um, that, uh, at least several of you all were involved in the development of the solar bylaw. And over time, we've learned a lot. And, uh, reflecting that knowledge in an amended bylaw would be a good thing, um, if we can do it and if we have the chance to do it because the Attorney General has, uh, gotten, uh, the bylaw back to us after review. So if we go to the next page, this is everyone's favorite subject. And you know, it's become a major focus of planning board proceedings. I know this is not a good depiction of the batteries that we're dealing with, but, um, it was the most colorful battery that I could find among the stock images available. You know, we've, um, we've talked about large battery storage being proposed in other towns, actually being approved by the D P U in Carver and Medford, uh, with some conditions. And solar developers in our town have proposed battery storage as part of the projects that they are, either have already obtained approval of or would like to seek approval of. Oh, you know that our concern has been with the possibility of thermal runaway, fires, air quality, toxic fumes, toxic, um, firewater runoff. And, you know, whether, uh, whether these, uh, batteries are safe for our town. Now, one of the, um, I guess one of the consequences of a battery fire is that when the fire department comes to the scene, we've talked about this before, they will make a decision on how to fight that fire. We saw that recently in an, um, uh, e-car fire, uh, in town. The decision was made to use water and it was a pretty significant amount of water, about eleven thousand gallons. And so, uh, it's a concern. If water is going to be used to put out batteries, are there going to be toxic chemicals entering our groundwater? our groundwater, infiltrating our wells, going into our wetlands, going into our water resources? And water, air quality issues are really significant as well. So, you know, going back and forth on this a little, it's sort of like a, being at, like the, a carnival, and you're at one of those shooting galleries, and you've got the little ducks going back and forth, and they're moving as you're trying to shoot them. This is what this issue is like, is as, as soon as you think you understand it, something happens, and you say, hmm, didn't know that. So, you know, I am concerned about this issue. Looked at Carver and their, their battery storage bylaws, they had experts helping them on these battery storage bylaws. I thought they would be a good place to start, I still think that, but, you know, the concerns about safety are not trivial or hysterical. I mean, they're, they may be in a small number of cases, that's what we hear, but the concerning thing is that the source of them is not known or understood, and with the source of them not being well-known or understood, it's hard to know what to do. And, you know, in recent days, I've come across some articles in New York State, this was as a result of being on the phone with the Fire Marshal's Office in, in Massachusetts, and there, there was relatively recently a fire at a battery, a solar farm in upstate New York. I think that the name of the town is, I'll probably butcher the pronunciation, but it looks like Chamon, New York, close to the Canadian border, and, you know, battery storage on a solar farm. The local fire department made the decision not to use water to put it out, so the fire smoldered for several days, resulted in shelter-in-place orders for people living nearby because of the fumes, and this was the third fire in a relatively small amount of time in New York State. And so, the other two were not at solar farms, but they were at different types of facilities. The tricky thing here is that, you know, the lithium ion batteries are susceptible to these kinds of fires, sort of, they don't have to be small or large, they can be either or in between, so it's hard to, hard to know exactly what to do. So, what the governor of New York has done is to call for a special investigation of battery storage, and there are some legislative calls for, you know, putting a stop to installing battery storage. New York has been on the leading edge of installing battery storage. It's one of the examples that I, you know, posited to you the last time that we spoke about this, as, as a state that had a model bylaw and had done a fair amount of work on this. And so, with, with them pulling back a bit, I guess I'm interested in your thoughts, and the thoughts of the planning board and the planning director, on sort of where, where this may lead us. Our battery storage bylaw is like Carver's, you know, it's, you know, similar to the New York model bylaw. It requires the adoption of certain safety standards, fire standards from the state, by NFPA. Those are the best standards that those authorities can come up with at this point, but the solar farm battery fire probably was subject to those standards. So, you know, it's, you know, we just need to think about this. Now, we'll just note a couple of things. One is that the, when the Mass DPU allowed the large battery storage projects to go forward, they required containment for any fire water runoff. That was a requirement of the projects, and that seems good, but if you did a calculation of the amount of fire water runoff that there would have been for the solar farm fire in Chamon, it'd be about a million gallons. So, the practicality of it is maybe, that's, that's something to think about, and infiltration into groundwater, you know, is, you know, you know, has, has been a concern that we've talked about. There are, there are some issues raised about whether, in fact, the water is toxic, how toxic it is, it's something to understand more about, and the toxicity of the air, something to understand. Now, suggestions have been offered for, you know, how maybe to put some bells and whistles on this. One is to put an early warning system on the battery, or battery array. This early warning system, now, the batteries come with a battery management system, which lets you know when there's smoke and fire, which is maybe later than you would like when it comes to knowing about a battery issue. There are apparently some other systems being developed that give you earlier warning than that, that just tell you that something's going awry in the battery, and, you know, and one example of this, and this is not an endorsement as much as it is an example, is there's something apparently called a Lion Tamer, L-I hyphen I-O-N-T-A-M-E-R, that gives you that kind of early warning. I don't know much about it, but something to know about. Other issue that's been, that was highlighted for me, is that there have been times when other planning boards have approved of battery storage at solar projects without requiring that there be water there, and that's something that we need to be very careful of. And possibility of just letting the fire burn, and trying to keep the other batteries from catching fire, has been suggested, you know, this is just sort of an array of, of suggestions that have been made. Now, if we were to go forward with a, a battery storage bylaw, you know, it's, I've talked with you about this before, I see the world in terms of risks and probabilities, and with never anything being 100% this or that. And so, I think if, if we had our way, we would go forward with a zoning bylaw that was 100% protective of the town, and I think one thing that's clear is that the state is really pushing battery storage, and is considering resistance to it to be a form of nimbyism, and so we need to be careful in how we go here, and I would say that it would be difficult to outright ban them at this point. And one unfortunate fact is that as much attention as we're giving to these batteries on, you know, solar sites, there are batteries everywhere now, and they all have these risks. I think the insurance companies are letting people know what the risks are by failing to insure, and so there's, you know, there, that is one way to think about this. If we were to go forward with a battery storage bylaw, I think we would want to make sure that it is as protective of the town as it can be, while being sustainable by the Attorney General's office. I would say the one that we have before you, probably needs some more work in that regard. Later on the agenda, there is an item listed for a moratorium. I'm just, if, if I can, I'm going to mash these discussions together a little too, because, again, looking at things on a spectrum. You know, my concern is that the more data comes in, the more questions there are, rather than answers, and so, you know, we've been looking at this issue, and learning more and more about it, and there's more and more to learn, but the data and guidance is, is not, is not yet at a place that I would say is, you know, has come to rest. There are new technologies being worked on, and so we're, we're going to be learning more about this. We could adopt a protective bylaw and still do that, and I think assure the safety of the town, but there are no silver bullets at this point. Neither a moratorium or a stronger bylaw will relieve the planning board of the decisions that it's facing in its pending cases. We still have to figure out how we're going to go in those cases. Moratorium would give us more time to study the issue, but it would be a limited time. You can't have a moratorium that extends until we feel comfortable going forward with a bylaw, so, and during that time, we should expect that developers will continue to file applications, you know, for, for battery storage. Now, a bylaw would provide standards to meet, and conditions on which special permits could be denied. It could also allow developers to move forward in areas of town where the same objections might not exist. You know, I'm throwing out a whole lot here, and more questions than answers, and hoping for insight and information from you all on what you think the best direction might go here. And with that, I would ask my coworkers on this to talk about anything that I've left out. It's obvious that I probably did more work on the battery storage bylaws, so I've been more long-winded and eloquent on this, and they probably feel like I've shortchanged their section, so whatever you think needs to be said, yes.
Mr. Chair, first, thank you, Sheri, for the summary. I think the form we are...
Mr. Chair, first, I wanted to thank Sheri for the summary. Given that we also opened the public hearing on the Article V extension, before we get into discussion, I do think we should, this was a, a change to the, the radio towers made at the request of the town emergency services. Mr. Buckland, do you just want to speak to that just briefly, just so it's on the record?
Sure. There are two articles that I'd like to address. One that I can do quickly is Article 12, removing Section 12, 16.9. This section, as we discovered, excludes the special permit reviews from all the performance standards of Article 12. So, by eliminating, removing that section, 12, 16.9, what we do is we allow this to apply, Article 12 to apply to special permit reviews. This makes sure that we have things like lighting, landscaping, and criteria for MS4 stormwater permitting to be included in the reviews for site, for special permits and site plan reviews. On Article V, Section 540, with wireless communications, the, the emergency services in town would like to, to put repeaters on the cell towers that are in, that are already erected in town, and to do that, we need a bylaw that allows the, the upper portion of the, of the tower to be set aside for the purpose of, of putting on the emergency services repeaters, that can expand the, the service area for the communications. So, this is something that I think is a very important bylaw to have, and with assist in the emergency response in town as well.
Does that, just one quick question. So, by changing this, does that now give the town access to space on towers that were permitted previously without this consideration?
Not really, it's not really retroactive, it's more of a, it's, it's more of if, if there's a change in, in the tower, then the, the access becomes available to the emergency services.
And the change in the tower could be change of ownership?
It could be.
Yep, okay. So, we don't, just because we're doing this doesn't necessarily mean that the, the emergency services is going to get a chance to put the repeaters on the towers that they, that they want to.
But without this, they won't be able to...
They never will be, yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
So, thank you, Mr. Buckland. So, Mr. Chair, to continue, before I follow on to what Ms. Quirk said, just to remind everyone, Article 16, which we didn't really touch on, is just really definitions, and we're, all of this is sort of proceeded from our review of Articles 14 and 15, and then expanding, and so we're continuing to work through to clarify definitions, add missing definitions. Much of this is coming from the experience the board has been facing with applicants, questions that have been raised, and, and things like that. So, it, it's really just a list of definitions. So, for example, we read, we read the bylaws, and nowhere in there, we use the word town repeatedly, but nowhere in the bylaw was town defined as the town of Wareham. So, simple corrections like that, just for clarity, but Article 16, the definitions are very important when you get savvy lawyers sitting in front of you, trying, and they're advocating on the behalf of their clients, so if we're not clear, they have the right to do, and they get paid to do that, so we're just trying to fill the gaps as we learn about them.
Well, I'd like to add, one other thing we changed in the, in Article 16, is the, the, where the definitions are applied or sought after, if they're not in the list of definitions in the Article 16, and that's Webster's edition, the third edition is what's listed in the, in the bylaw right now, but that's no longer in print, so what we want to have is a dictionary that's in print and...
So, these were written in the Stone Ages, but, but, yeah. So, thank you, that's, that's good.
That's a good call.
That's a good call, Ken. So, I think we've now touched on all of the articles, and, and when the, the town is given their chance to speak, I think we've opened it. There's not much I want to add, excuse me, not much I want to add to what Ms. Quirk said. I did want to point out, in case there's any fear, we talked about procedure doc, or procedures that we apply, and, and Ms. Quirk said they would be adopted by majority vote of the planning board, and that is correct, but I also want to report, after holding a public hearing. So, it's not, it's not, it's not done in secret, it just, we don't have to go through the biannual town meeting planning process, and, once adopted, it's not subject to AG review, so we don't spend two years trying to get feedback from the Attorney General on something the town has voted on. Now, we can't move everything into rules and regulations, but there are things that belong there, and, or can logically rely there, so that's what we're trying to accomplish. I don't think, I, I don't really have anything else to add, I think Sheri did a great job of summarizing. If questions come up, I'll, and I'll, I'll try and help answer them, but it, it's a lot of work to change zoning bylaws, and, and some citizens have pointed out other problems with the bylaws, which still exist, there's lots of inconsistencies and typos. I, I did want to say, we did not take on trying to fix every known or unknown problem in the, in the bylaws, but there's more work to be done, as Sheri said, just keeping up with the changes in the energy sector, let alone...
That's a job all by itself.
Let alone the fixing the, the inconsistencies that evolve with how the bylaws get adapted. So, we are trying to fix some of those things, but we didn't, we're not taking on everything yet, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. You know, it's important that the citizens know that there's a tremendous amount of work that's been put forth by Carl, and Sheri, and Jane, and others, that... amount of work that's been put forth by Carl and Sheri and Jane and others that, and this is months and months and months in the, in the works. This, this wasn't something that happened over a cup of coffee on a Saturday morning. So thank you all for the, the extraordinary lift and, and bringing this forward. Is there any other comments from the board before we open it up to the public? I'm looking at you, Mr. Baptiste. Jane?
Okay, with no other comments from the board and being a public hearing, I will open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to come forth to talk to any of these articles that we're discussing? Come on up.
Good evening. Nancy McHale, Farring Hill Road. I understand that this is an enormous amount of work and it was trying to bite off two legs of an elephant. So I totally get it. One of the thoughts and comments is that having had it all dumped at the same time, while it makes some sense to think about it as a unit, it makes it really virtually impossible for average people to digest it. It was also very difficult to try to figure out, and I appreciate Ken sending them on Friday night. That was appreciated very much. But it was hard to take a real look at the red lines to see, were these the original ones? Was this the last iteration between the committee, you know, which was, what was being changed and what wasn't being changed? So that made me trying to reconcile some things difficult. And I understand, believe me, having sat as chair of the solar bylaw committee, and it took a huge chunk of time and commitment and energy and probably a year and a half of my life, and I hope that it doesn't take that much out of yours. Anyway, that being said, I've heard some pushback saying, okay, things are going to rules and reg and it seems like that's to make it easier for the developers to understand what's happening. But is it, does that make it easier for the public to know what's happening? And if things are going out of the review process, the site plan review or the special permit, either one, does that mean that the citizens are giving up a right to comment on those things when they come up? And that's kind of a rhetorical question at this point. One of the other questions, problems, issues that I have with, and it speaks to Sheri's concern about the, the batteries, is if indeed the state in its infinite wisdom, with all of its experts, with all of its capacity for administrative action, et cetera, et cetera, has not seen it fit to put forth a model solar bylaw or even very specific guidance? Is the town willing, ready, able to take on that risk, sitting on our one source solar platform? You know, and that, that's very troubling to me. So, you know, we are a community on the water. We have more waterfront than any other place in this state. It seems like we have a lot of water, but once we lose our drinking water or get it contaminated, we are in a ton of trouble. I mean, we're talking about how much sewer upgrades are going to cost, the cost of doing water purification systems for not only the town wells, but private wells is going to be astronomical. Okay? So these are the kinds of things that, that kept me up at night when we were looking at the, the solar bylaw. The other thing in reading the battery section, the 598, as written, it, it seems to me that a project could come forward because it talks that batteries are only an accessory to a solar field. Okay? And that's fine. But if somebody had a moderate size solar field, could they also then put in a giant enormous battery and take battery off or electricity off of the grid and store it? I mean, are we setting ourselves up for something like that, that it can be oversized? I didn't see anything in the proposed bylaw that would, would not allow that. Those are just, you know, I have not spent anywhere close to enough time to have all of my comments articulated, but I appreciate the comment, the, you know, the thought process of trying to separate out some things, certainly in terms of making site plan review and special permit a little easier to understand. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Of course.
Through you too, to you. What, what's your advice? I mean, so we've got, we could do nothing and have existing law as it is. And existing law probably allows solar developers to propose battery storage as, you know, part of their projects. And we could, we could deal with those battery storage projects as we're dealing with them now, which is to look at health, safety and welfare and make determinations on that. Is it to consider a moratorium? Is it to tighten up the bylaw? Do you have any sense at this point? Or is it too early in your consideration?
I, I don't have the, the magic pill, the, the one answer. And it seems like, you know, the Attorney General having, I just finished reading some of their comments about the, the Carver bylaw and the, you know, and, and they weren't approving pieces and parts of it. And I don't, again, it was like six pages that I'm trying to read on my phone and I'm like, oh, no, this is not a good idea. But it might be worthwhile going back and looking at that to see exactly why they said it wasn't okay. I don't know what reasons they had given. But the fact that the governor of New York is now backpedaling on some of this stuff speaks volumes. And the fact that the insurance companies are pulling out is huge. You know, and not to be morbid, but, you know, the early warning system certainly didn't help our friends in, in Hawaii. You know, nothing is, is a hundred percent and we get that, the risk benefits. But where this is, is like trying to nail jello to a tree. It is just extremely difficult to figure out how to do that.
And to Sheri's point, it's a constantly moving target.
Absolutely is. Okay.
Mr. Chair, are we, excuse me, were you done Sheri?
Yes.
Okay. If, if with your approval, I'd like to address one point that the Ms. McHale made. She raised a lot of good points and I'm not going to try and digest. Regarding your concerns about moving items from the bylaw into the rules and regs, a couple of things. Although Sheri presented it as making it easier for the, of the applicants to under, it, it will also make it easier for the citizens to understand, I, I believe. Two, I think you were afraid, and if I characterize you incorrectly, let me know, that they, they would no longer be required to be applied. Rules and regulations have the force of law and they will, they must be applied to the review. So it, just because it's not in the bylaw, it still needs to be part of the review process. And the, the applications have to provide what's being asked for, the criteria that are described. Criteria should really be in the, in the bylaw, but any, any, any criteria that's in the rules and regulations, we, we don't get to ignore that. It's just a, a different place in, in the, the body of the law. So we're not going to, we're not throwing them out. They're not hidden and they're not skipped in the review process.
Right. Which will still be public.
Public. Absolutely.
By, by having it in the rules and regs, what it allows the board to do is to be far more nimble to react to shortcomings in our, in our system. So that if a developer comes in and we have something that isn't quite tight enough in our bylaws and, but now it's in the rules or regulations, we don't have to wait a year to, to, to go through the process of getting it to town meeting, to getting it voted on and approved. Now we have the option where we can close the loophole, wherever it was that we got took advantage of. And there's more than enough of them out there that are just waiting to take advantage of us.
I, I totally understand that. The, the question then becomes, where are the rules and regulations accessible to the public, to the general public in an easy to find place and format? And will the changes that continue to be made along the way be notated so that everyone is aware, everyone who, you know, reads these things, is aware of what changed when?
Well, there would definitely be, I mean, there'd be public hearing if we ever decided that rules and regulations needed tweaking. Like to Carl's point, it's not going to be a smoke-filled room where we decide in private. It's going to be a forum just like this.
And then, and then.
And then.
I understand that we as a collective town have, have challenges in making information available, but the, and I'm not trying to oversimplify, but the, the, the simple answer is these things are always by law available in the clerk's office. That's not a great answer, but it is the place they have to be.
Okay.
And yes, they're, they're also posted on the website, the planning board website, the zoning, they may not be easy to find yet, but that's, they're, they're, that's two parts.
And, and you know, presuming that I hadn't heard the part that when a rule or a reg is changed, that there's a public hearing to go with that?
Mm-hmm.
And that that then would be noticed in the, in the newspaper, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, that was, that was what I was trying to clarify. We, we can't adopt these, change them without public hearing.
Yeah. I mean, the, the public hearing piece of it is, has to exist. It can't happen in the discussion section after the public hearings have closed.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Exactly right.
Thanks for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else either present or on Zoom that wants to weigh in?
Eric Lintella, 15 Squirrel Island Road. First, yeah, thank you for all that hard work, you know, pertaining to, you know, everything that we need to know. It's a moratorium. Time is what we need to gather more information. And I know we can't, you know, deny things for too long, but we're learning more and more all the time. The battery thing has been something I've been very concerned with and looking into more, trying to, trying to find information. The containment issue, the town, or the state's pushing, pushing the battery storage, pushing the solar fields. And it's, there's a give and take. You just can't, you know, say no to everything there. The one thing I've been thinking about is maybe site in relation to where's a proper, what, what development of a solar field could have the extra battery storage? Where might that be? Maybe it's a site issue. There are some sites, I think we know, that are probably not very conducive to putting something like that. But there are other sites that aren't near homes, maybe. I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm trying to give and take a little bit. Give them a little or something if, you know, we take something. I think it's kind of bothersome that you folks, the town folks, are doing a lot of work to figure out how to better deal with this kind of development. And the state just sort of throws it all out there at us and we got to kind of come up, solve the problems and try to make arguments and stuff. I'd like to see them do a heck of a lot more work, what you've been doing. The issue, I, I keep coming to containment. There's no way to contain this stuff if there is a major fire. The, the car was one little, that was interesting. 11,000 gallons of water. Where'd all that water go? I mean, it wasn't contained. And here, we're talking about these storage units, and the amount of water that it would take, all it's going to take is one, one time in a certain location. And when Sam brought it up in the beginning about where these are located and where our aqua fire is, then it gets a little more scarier where these developments are. And when they fire, and that's going to be a disaster wherever that water goes, however it's going to be treated. I haven't really seen anything. Maybe I've missed it. I, I'd like to see something more from the, solid from the fire department or any fire department, how they can really successfully, or how, who's come up with a way to deal with this, to how to put out a fire. It's, it kind of bothers me a little bit. Well, maybe we'll let it, it'll be the, up to the call of the guy on duty. Do you let it burn? Do you use water? They won't use foam anymore because of the chemicals. You can't, I mean, using anything dry is ridiculous. Everything's either going to go into the air, go into the water. It's still going to come down into the ground. And if it's near neighborhoods, it's near wells, it's near wetlands, over the aqua fire, just one time. We've had one, one car fire. We hear of solar upstate New York. I mean, you don't hear many about these solar fires, but they're starting, small, you know, from a car, solar fields, et cetera. The one place in New York, what a bike shop solar burnt the whole place down. It's, all it's going to take is one time in Wareham over some major water source. And then, you know, one time, one percent. So, you know, it's, it is dangerous. But I'm thinking about, again, the state and what's mandated, give and take a little. Is, is a site, look, is something about locating a development that could handle extra storage? Is that a workable thing? I, I don't know. The batteries themselves just bother me everywhere, but nonetheless, this is technology. We started this out as something wonderful. And then all of a sudden, we learned that these fields are going into residential areas and they're cutting down woods. That's, you know, and it's, it's, we're dealing with one issue after another. And it's always just about site for the most part. They're not putting them into these abandoned sand pits or industrial areas. It's always about money. But boy, they can sure put them into residential areas, which is still, I can't understand that one. But, but I'd like to. But, uh, but I'd like to see something from the fire department bit more. I, in the article with the car, he did mention, I think the chief, there's some kind of new, I don't know, new product or new information they're getting or way to use, deal with it. But I haven't, I'd like to see a good, hard presentation of what, how that would take place with a fire. Or whether it's a video, something well documented. I haven't seen anything yet. And, and I think that's very bothersome. We keep talking about it and, but I don't, I'd like to see a good presentation like you do from maybe the chief or, or something that shows where this is taking place. What do we do? What can be done? Um, there's a whole lot of issues, you know, in these bylaws that are going to be coming up. And it's interesting reading. It's difficult in some cases, yeah, to understand. Nancy's, uh, questions are right on the mark that, you know, to help us understand it better. Your job has been great. You're, we're learning more. It's getting easier to understand. But we're kind of all in this together here and every little bit we can each contribute in that will help us to better understand, help us to better, uh, deal with the bylaws, uh, enforce them a little bit more or regulate, improve them, change them. So I don't, you know, at the moment, I'm just, um, it's, the batteries have been a big concern of mine as well as everything else we've always discussed. And those little bits and pieces that I see popping up in the bylaws or suggestions of changes is, is great to see. And, um, I guess the other last thing is it's, we have these bylaws and some of them, you know, I've read about there's the cultural things and heritage things, protection of that and the water rights. It's, it seems that when a development presents their project, we start to kind of pick and choose which of the issues are more important to try to push. Is there something cultural? Is there an ancient trail? Are there wetlands adjacent, people's wells? We seem to try to add as much information to deny as well as to pass something. I'm, I'm a little, little concerned about some of those checks and balances. Because at times when we seem to be discussing one thing, then it seems to go to the wayside and we kind of refocus on something else. Right now it's batteries. That seems to be the, a major thing. So I, you know, there's sort of like this weird point system I keep looking at. Okay, here's, this development is dealing with trails, there's cultural, maybe there isn't a species in danger to wetlands. And then, well, there, but it's not strong enough to say no to. So, you know, and I'm, I'm just learning a whole lot too over the last few years of listening and to the developers, how they present. And it's been really interesting how well the planning board has been able to really ask real good questions of them and they've had to, they've had to come back and really answer those hard questions you've asked. Anyhow, those are just a few things. Um, the batteries are a big thing I'm thinking about right now. But all the bylaws I think are important, that all the issues and concerns that people bring up and that are, that are in those things. And anyhow, they should be considered as well. And I, I know they are, but it's still, you know, in the end, you have to say yes or no to a project. And you want to be damn right when you say one or the other that you've got the good information behind you. So that's what I mean, you know, there's certain things, well, these weren't that important, but boy, you got them on this or vice versa. To deny or to pass. Solar is great. It's, it, it has to happen and we should make it happen. But there are these problems obviously we've run into and, and, uh, I, I just, I, I feel a little bit, the state's falling short. They're pushing it like crazy down our throats and we're the ones that have to try to really make the hard questions and throw it back at them. And we're fighting something that I think they should have been a little more on top of things in the beginning when they pushed it. So anyhow, that's all for now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yep.
One, one of the things, uh, Eric, that your comments remind me of is that, um, we, we don't often see developers come in with community benefit agreements, which are, uh, as I understand, being pushed by, uh, the Department of Energy now for projects that are being funded with federal dollars. The, um, uh, the, the federal DOE is pushing for developers to get together with community interests and to come up with, um, uh, packages that enable, uh, local community groups to support projects by, um, looking at local needs and, um, and answering those needs in various ways. And, um, and I think it's, uh, something frankly, it would be good for this planning board to see more of, to see developers working with people in the community in order to make, um, projects win, win, win. So that, uh, you know, as, as, um, and it's our job to decide all different kinds of cases, tough, easy, whatever. It would be a much easier case to decide if a developer came in with a CBA that said, um, I have the support of these local groups because, uh, here's something that they find very valuable. It's not just money, something valuable they're getting from this. So it's something to think about.
Thank you Sherri. Any other? Not you. That nice lady right there. I'm going to make you a way. Yes, ma'am.
It's a tough crowd.
It is.
Thank you. Kathy Papalardo, Fearing Hill Road. Um, following up on Nancy's, uh, in regards to the capacity of the batteries. And I tried reading through all of this. I didn't get through it all because there's other priorities we all have. But, um, is there a way then, say a solar project is X amount of capacity that it's going to generate the batteries that would be put for that field? Is there a way to limit their capacity to take care of that solar energy being generated on site? And not bigger than that in regards to taking on energy generated offsite? Would that be a way to limit the size of a battery?
Um, if I can, that, uh, that actually, that question came up while we were discussing the, the Zero Route 25 project.
Yes.
Because their intent.
I was here for that.
You're here for all of them. You know, because their intent was to pull, uh, energy off the grid as opposed to storing from the array. So I, I don't know if, and this is just my, my, my thoughts is, I'm not sure if limiting the size of the battery is the bigger question more than its, its intent. You know, if, if you've, if you can look at, uh, a process that's, that says you can only use the battery to store the collection from the array and the array can only produce two megawatts. Doesn't make a lot of sense to put a 10 megawatt battery system in there.
Right.
Because you're never going to utilize it, you know, financially, it just, it's not going to make sense. So, you know, my thought on it is, is more attacking the method in which the battery is going to be utilized more so than limiting the size of the battery on the project.
So the battery to be geared towards storing the energy generated on site at that project.
Correct.
So is that something that specifically can be worked into this? Because reading the section about tier one, tier two and tier three. My question on that, it's, it goes on about the capacity of each tier. And then it says about, and if it's in a room or enclosed area. That's talking about the battery itself, I take it.
That's correct.
That it's depending on the size of it, it has to be, the smaller one is a single energy storage system. And then the next one can be more than one energy storage technology. I'm imagining the same technology, but more than one unit versus different technologies. And then tier three is the biggest one. And it's again, more than one storage battery in a room or enclosed area. So those batteries would be geared towards the size of the capacity of that solar field, I'm guessing.
If, um, so if, if the batteries were tied to the solar field and collecting the output of that solar field, then what you're saying would be correct. And, uh, if you look at the current solar bylaw, which is before the AG.
Right.
It limits batteries to batteries that collect the output of a solar field. So it does what you're proposing to do. I think in order to achieve the result that you're, um, aiming, there would have to be some refinement of the battery storage bylaw in order to make that same connection. And that's, that's something to look at. I would say, uh, the attorney general has, um, has been very expansive in what it said was a battery connected to a solar field. So we would have to, um, we'd have to figure out a way to do that so as to, um, be able to, um, uh, make sense to the attorney general. But that's, that's, that's a suggestion we can look at.
Okay, so you're expected to hear from the AG's office regarding the bylaw that we passed spring of last year by September 19th?
Yes.
How long till the last date to submit articles for this town meeting? I don't know. I know when town meeting is, but I don't know when the last date to submit articles are.
Thirty-five days before, is that right Ken?
What we can do is have a placeholder in there.
On special town meeting?
On the special town meeting and then it could go in, it could go in late.
Because that one, that one you can go real close to the end for special town meeting versus regular town meeting.
That's right. And as long as, as the town moderator doesn't complain about us and yell at us, then we can do it that way.
Okay.
So, you know, and I think what this really reinforces is that if there are things that you really believe would be improvements, now is a good time for us to be talking about that so that we can have them ready should the opportunity arise.
Though I appreciate all the work that was put into this because I do understand it. It's a heck of a lot of work. Thank you.
So something that, that was discussed during one of the recent applicants, you know, one of the open hearings on a specific project was to limit the size of that battery by sequencing where it sits relative to the meter and the solar panels. So that may be a way of doing that, that if it's, uh, between the solar panels and the meter.
It can only take power from the.
From the, from the solar panels. So that may be a way of achieving what I think I'm understanding you're looking to do.
Yeah, that is just, that, that battery is geared specifically to that solar field.
Right, that if it's, if the, if it's on the other side of the meter, it's between the, the power come, the grid and the,
And the array.
And the meter, then it can take from either. But if it's on the solar panel side of the meter, you may be able to achieve what you're looking to do. So that may, I wonder if that's a way. I, I have no idea with it. How the attorney general would look on that, but maybe that's.
It's a good conversation though.
Hopefully Massachusetts, um, the state of Massachusetts, et cetera, with New York taking a big look. Because I remember years ago when New York put a stop on fracking because of everything that was going on in Pennsylvania. And New York said, that's it. Pennsylvania's gotten all these problems and groundwater contamination, et cetera. So they stopped. So be, I know it's going to take a while, but it'll be interesting to see what comes out of New York. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anybody else? Anybody? You know it's not a, a board meeting unless I pick on you.
You know, I didn't know I had an older brother. I thought only older brothers were supposed to do that. So Tricia Wurz, I'm speaking as a town resident, not as a select board member. I live at 30 Taff Street. Um, I want to, um, put out a way to frame what we're thinking about. So my background is bringing new technologies to market. And right now we're looking at batteries being a new technology. And I mean, I've been working, I've worked with Duracell back in the nineties and Toshiba in the nineties on batteries. And I think I talked to some of you about one of the reasons this grew so fast is because it still comes out of the technology industry and they are, can't sell any more computers. They're overstocked. So what happens when you look at launching any type of new product, toothpaste or solar fields? Is there is a process where it's early innovative, market acceptance and market saturation. Right now, this industry of solar batteries and, and producing that type of energy is in the early innovative stage, which means it's going to be very expensive. There's going to be a lot of screw ups. And unfortunately with this pro, type of product, the screw ups can hurt the environment permanently and the human beings permanently. So when I look at the plans that are going to be coming in front of you for battery sites, whether they're add-on battery sites to solar fields that already exist or they're going to be straight battery facilities. There is a whole lot of infrastructure that is actually part of that product. So if I was selling that product, I would not just be looking at what the batteries are or the cases that they're in. I would be wanting to also support what we need to do to service it. So if we're putting, for example, a battery field, I don't know, in Annie Hayes's field, she's going to kill me. You know, how do we run water out there? How do we put alarms out there? What type of staffing, both remotely or physically, do we need in order to properly service this new product? And who owns that cost? So I believe when these types of plans come in front of our town right now, the plan has to include how the water's going to get there, what alternative types of service are, who's going to cover the cost for insurance? And there is a whole bunch of costs right now that the utility companies are passing off to the towns and cities that they're putting this in. That insurance, that plumbing infrastructure, that disposable disposal cost of treating now water that is not user friendly for the human being, that is a cost of their product. And it's a cost that they should be picking up and that should be part of any plans that are considered. And if we don't do that, we are not going to be able to support what goes into this town. And it only needs, when we're talking about these battery sites, there might be 20, 30, 50, 150, 200 individual battery cells in there. And it only takes one to run away and then set off the other and the other and the next and the next. And you can call up all sorts of examples from around the world right now about what's happened when these runoffs, these battery runaways happen. And they are tremendously, um, destructive, permanently destructive. I mean, one of the places you want to look is what's happening in Korea. They've had a huge number of these fail. Why is Korea important? It's because a lot of these batteries are being manufactured in Korea. So I would just say, um, if we go back to what we're talking about, the articles that are in front of us, I think a moratorium is required. But the work that needs to be done while the moratorium is in place is how do we define the product and the service that is going to be sold to us? And how do we put that in the plan and how do we make sure those costs are covered? Not by the town, by the people who own the product. And eventually we'll either blow up this planet or we will move from the early adopter stage to the market acceptance stage and it will work. That's all.
Thank you ma'am. Do we have, we've run out of people, Jim? You're all. You're all set, Jim? Uh, anybody online? No. Um, Ms. Moran? You had a, you had a big part in this. Do you wanna chime in at all or? I didn't wanna ignore you. You, yes. Yeah, I was looking at you. Uh, any more comments from the board or? So we, we kind of, we kind of like grabbed the battery storage moratorium and folded it into this conversation. But I think for cleanliness sake, we, we should probably keep them separate as far as the vote goes. So.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I think I would recommend that you continue the hearing for, uh.
For the, um, for the articles?
Yeah, for the articles. While you mull them over and get some, uh, maybe some additional input on them.
Yeah. So, well, that was kinda where I was leading. I wanted to make sure I didn't wrap up the moratorium question in that though. So if there is no other information to be gathered this evening or comments to be made, I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for the zoning bylaw articles as listed, one through seven, um, until. There's no way I'm putting it on the 28th. The 11th is, is Patriots' Day, which pushes it out to the 25th. Cause that, that's given us a problem.
That's, that's an issue with the thirty-five days.
Yeah, so.
Or is it, Ken?
No, it's, it's not because you, um, you're just making recommendations to the, to town meeting. And you can do that on the floor of town meeting. As a matter of fact, you don't need to have that in the, if you want it in the warrant, you wanna get it in as soon as possible to the, to the, uh, the printing of the warrant by the finance committee. And, uh, then you can have your recommendations and, uh, the drafts put in there. If not, they, then they go in as, uh, on the floor of town meeting.
So which way would be best for us? Do we?
Be best if you had them in beforehand, but, uh.
Well, I mean, can we meet, can, can we forego meeting? Well, the fourth is labored, uh, I'm sorry, the 11th is Patriots' Day. So can we forego the Patriots' Day meeting and meet on the 18th instead?
I think that'd be reasonable, yeah.
That'll give us enough time to do what we need to do.
I think so.
Okay, so.
We have to go to the finance committee as well, thirty-five days before.
Okay.
That takes us enough time, right?
Is everybody on the board okay with meeting on the 18th for September?
That should give us enough time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, as we're discussing this topic, I, I'm okay with your recommendation, but I'm, I'm looking at the back page of the agenda. We have two big projects coming before us on September 11th. And if we're not meeting on the 11th, two solar projects, we should notify the applicants that we're not meeting that day.
That can be handled by the, well, the 11th is, is a holiday, right?
Yeah, but if they're scheduled for, I mean, they're scheduled for that day. And that's the way they were positioned to us in the emails. That's zero root twenty-five new application and the Intero application for three seventy county road.
I thought those were coming to, oh no, that's twenty-seven and one fifty. Okay, so can, can the planning office notify those applicants that we're gonna move the meeting from the 11th to the 18th?
Yeah, well, uh, probably to notice as well too.
Okay, and when we're, um, when, when we're setting the agenda, I can work with Sonia on that, but I'd, I'd like to make sure that these articles are placed first on the agenda, not last, so that they're given, given their due and not stuffed into the late night portion of our meeting. All right, so then I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for zoning bylaw articles as listed on the agenda, listed one through seven, uh, until Monday, September 18th.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason, all in favor. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair, Otai. Thank you for the folks that took the time out of their lives to come and talk about this stuff. Means a lot, even you. Uh, we have no more continued public hearings under, uh, four other zoning bylaw amendments to consider. So we've, we've actually had the discussion on the moratorium, on the bylaws, which inadvertently, as I was making notes, I heard moratorium, moratorium, moratorium come out of pretty much everybody's mouths. Uh, I was just curious what the, what the board members, what your feelings were on that.
As, as a point of note, and, and I don't, Ken, I don't think we noticed the public hearing for the moratorium.
No, that's why it's under other discussion.
And, and just, just so that, and I don't believe we've posted, we've worked on a couple of drafts of a moratorium, but I don't think it's been shared with the public. So if we.
This is, this is to set it up, this is whether or not you wanna proceed with it.
Right, no, no, that's where I was going. So if we wanna proceed with it, we need to then notice the public hearing.
Correct.
Publish, um, some words.
Mm-hmm.
So.
But if, but if we're, if we're gonna get this work done, and that's, that's where I was going with this as well, is what's everybody's, uh, appetite for moving this? This would have to be moved to the 18th as well.
Right. Yes, that's the only time remaining.
Right. So I guess, I guess the, the, the comments I'm looking for is, I mean, I heard what I heard from the, the citizens on their comments, but I'm interested what the comments of the board are as far as continuing on with preparing, uh, a moratorium for town meeting and moving it to the 18th and, and getting it ready to, to present.
So I, I have thoughts. I'm sure Sherry has thoughts.
I mean, I'm, I'm torn between the status quo. Just, um, let's not do anything. That means that we'll, we will see, uh, battery storage, um, projects in connection with, uh, solar projects. We're dealing with them and I think we're getting a handle on them to, to some degree. Um, and, and we could decide to, um, to just go forward with the bylaw when we're ready for it and not be tied to a particular deadline. You know, the, um, someone could go in and seek a variance from, uh, from the ZBA. And, um, Ken, I think what you've said is that they would be unlikely to be successful on that, given the case law. But, um, that, that's a risk. So that's sort of the, um, status quo, where we have some measure of authority to protect the town, um, from the standpoint of health, safety and welfare, versus a moratorium where we're just, you know, holding things steady and working on a bylaw. You know, I would be, I'm, I'm sort of fine with either.
I, I think from my own personal viewpoint, I think a moratorium would be a helpful tool in allowing us to, to, to kinda refine the solar bylaw on the battery storage portion of it.
Mm-hmm.
It, we're having, you know, we've got our hands full with what's coming at us now without adding more projects on behind it that are, that are looking to add the batteries as well. So, I mean, personally for me, I think, um, the moratorium is, is a, a, a pretty solid approach.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm, I understand your point and I'm not challenging that. I wanna remind everyone though, that a moratorium, um, does not affect the land use. So if a moratorium is in place, people can continue to file applications and they will be subject to the land use rules in place at the time, regardless of the moratorium. So without a change in the bylaws, any new application that comes in will be subject to the, the zoning bylaws on the book as of fall, excuse me, spring town meeting of this year, regardless of, if we, even if we have a moratorium.
If we, if we forward the work on the moratorium and get it ready to present for, for town meeting in the fall, then wouldn't that?
Doesn't keep them filing the app, they could file A and Rs. They don't even have to file.
I, I know, we've already been down that road.
Right, so that's, that, I just wanna remind everyone that a moratorium doesn't protect us from that.
No, they'll, they'll file right up until town meeting.
Right, but he, but that will then give them another year to continue to file use protection.
So what's the sense of the moratorium at all then? Do I even bring it up?
Um, that's, that is the question that I'm sort of raising. What does it actually? Am I correct, Ken? They, they can still file applications even if there's a moratorium, right?
Uh, that's correct. Uh, I think, uh, my, my opinion is that, uh, you have, what's, as it was described, you have an innovative period right now. There's a lot of flux in, uh, in the battery storage, uh, technology. And there's even, uh, a point about a zinc-based system now as well too, instead of lithium. Because of this, of this, of this unstable environment and the amount of change that's taking place and the fact that, uh, zero root twenty-five is able to proceed without a battery, there, there isn't a requirement apparently from the state that's absolute, that they have to put in the battery system in the, uh, the solar fields that they produce, that they, that they, that they propose. Uh, makes, it makes, uh, sense that you have a moratorium if you're gonna also create a work plan that spells out to the AG, Attorney General, what you're gonna be doing in the meantime in this, in this time period. You can get about a year out of a moratorium. The Attorney General is usually accepting, accepting of a year moratorium. And in that timeframe, if you, uh, actually, uh, go through some process, that you, uh, go through a planning process and, uh, look for, uh, solutions to the battery problem that you've identified.
Isn't that kind of what we just talked about tonight?
And that was the reason why the, the moratorium makes sense in that.
But it doesn't protect us from a flood of developers coming in and putting in applications.
You know they will.
Of course, I mean, that's what happened with, with.
Well, they may not, if they, if, if it's not necessary for them to include it in their projects, if it's not a requirement, absolute requirement by the state and they can get away with putting in the solar field, then maybe they can do that without having, uh, the battery in place and, and the aggravation of the battery as well.
Well, what I, what I.
I think also another, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, another consideration is that if they, those applications are filed and filed under existing law, I think we still have authority under existing law to do exactly what we did in zero root twenty-five, which is to look at the applications and say, this doesn't make sense to us. So.
So, again, I guess the, the question begs, what's the moratorium gonna do for us? Is it just adding work to the planning board's?
Yeah, you, you have, you can't sit back and quietly let somebody else take over.
We wouldn't, we haven't, I mean, we've been active on the battery front and the solar front for the last two years.
Yeah, which is, which is why the, the moratorium would probably pass by the, the AG's office as well too, cause you've been doing the work that, that plays out.
Right, so if we got a moratorium for a year, if the, if the, the townspeople voted it in at town meeting, at that point, when it's voted yes, and there's a one-year moratorium and the planning board commits to continuing our work on trying to find a solution to battery storage and how to apply it safely, if it can be, what does, what does that do for us in regards to our relationship with these developers? Do they still come in and propose a solar array with batteries? Do they come in and propose a solar array with no batteries, but they have placeholders within the design that they could possibly add batteries down the road? You know, or do?
You, you'll see all of that, yeah.
Okay, so, so again, I guess the question begs, what, what does the moratorium do for us? I mean, it sounds nice.
I mean, I, I think it could have, um, a positive effect on how we view pending applications in the sense that if we do, if we do, uh, make some rulings against some of the battery storage projects that are in front of us, in court, we may have a better chance of prevailing because we're looking at the issue and trying to resolve it and not just saying no to, you know, whatever is in front of us. And that, that's hard to quantify, but that's possible.
That's a possibility.
Yeah.
It also may, it's possible that it might shape the way that developers come to us. You know, maybe if they know we've got a moratorium in place and that we're working on standards, that the projects they bring with to us will be crafted differently.
A rational developer would say to themselves, um, this town is looking hard at battery storage issues and, um, it's gonna be hard for me to get a battery storage project approved.
Or if they wanna try, they better come with a, a pretty darn nice design.
Yes, in a, an area of town that is immune from all of these bad effects.
Okay, okay, so I.
Wait, one more, just to be clear, we're not talking about simply a moratorium on utility scale, um, battery. So we're talking about, uh, as accessory use. Now, just to continue down, are we talking about the individual homeowner putting in a Tesla wall? Which is happening.
Yeah, it's already, I, I've talked to the fire department. They're already starting to, to inspect these new installations.
Right now, um, that's, I think, being covered under as of right, cause the solar is as of right. And I think it's silent on battery, so I'm not quite sure how they're getting approved. It's not an approved use, but.
It's probably not under our jurisdiction. I mean, I think.
It's electric, it's probably under the electrical. Um, but if we don't, but we could actually move it under our jurisdiction, the bylaw speaks to it, the, the new bylaw speaks to it in, at tier one, although it's still, I think, as of right with some.
Yes, some bells and whistles, yeah.
But if the moratorium went so far as to say, including Tesla walls and that, that category, that would, again, that would then bring it into the force of, under the purview of, of the planning board. So my question is, is what is the vision for the moratorium? What is the scope of the moratorium?
Yeah, the, the moratorium that I had drafted, um, had the same scope as, uh, FLPA eight fifty-five did, which is the battery storage standard that the, uh, firefighters are using and is in the Carver and Medford, uh, bylaws. It's, you know, what, what do, what does the, uh, fire safety organization think is worthy of special protection?
And does that include Tesla? I, that was a question. Uh, well, that, that's why I'm saying,
Yeah.
if that's how we define it, nobody at town meeting is gonna know what that means.
Yeah, well, I think we need to sit down with the fire department and see what, what they think would be most workable and most useful.
Okay, so do, do we wanna move the, the moratorium subject to town meeting and, and put it on the agenda for the 18th and try to do some homework between now and then?
That, that's, I'm just asking questions so I know, I already know what we're voting on.
Still, but, you know, I guess the bigger question is, do we move forward with this or don't? That, that's my question to the board. Listening to Ken and, and the benefits that it's, that it's not providing us, um, you know, I, I, I completely misunderstood the meaning of the word. I was all for it, especially listening to the concern of the citizens. But after. But after listening to your explanation of how it's not gonna really do anything for us, I'm, I'm not so sure that it's worthy of, of the effort.
I agree.
Jane?
Yeah, after hearing what, after hearing what a moratorium might do for us, I wonder about its efficacy.
I, I, I think what it does is it buys us time to do exactly what we've been doing. But during that time, it doesn't stop anybody from coming into town and, and submitting an application.
It creates a logjam.
Or they don't even have to submit an application
Right, they're just...
for solar or for battery.
Right, just an A and R.
An A and R protects them.
So, so by, by moving this forward, does it, like you said, a logjam, does it, does it trigger a run on the bank?
Right, and I'm gonna, and I, I'm, I don't care either way about the moratorium. I mean, I could see pros and cons. What I was trying to say is the same thing that I said when people were proposing a moratorium on the solar bylaw. I don't want the town citizens to say, "Oh, I voted for a moratorium. I'm not gonna vote for the bylaw because I'm protected."
Right.
Really, I mean, if, if somebody is in favor of the moratorium, that's great, but we still, I'm strongly of the opinion, uh, and, and, and per one of the citizens' comments, we need to explain it better, why it's better to get something on the books now than to, to, to be naked.
Right.
Uh, even if it's not perfect. But I'm, when we present this at town meeting or whomsoever presents it, I, I don't think it's in the town's best interest to view it as an either or. It's a both and, I think.
But will a moratorium cloud muddy the waters about people's understanding of the...
Well, that's, 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 that's the concern. But if we have a moratorium and we have a bylaw, we have the land use protections that are afforded to us of the bylaw, and we have, with the moratorium, we get the emotional, um...
Buy-in?
Buy-in, plus Sherry pointed out, it signals to the developers. I mean, there's a lot of signaling that that does, but...
So, is, is the benefits that you've just described worth the potential of triggering a run of developers coming in here and submitting A and Rs as placeholders?
And they will.
You mean, we saw it.
Yeah.
It happened to us already.
But the more, I, I was, yes, but if we get the bylaw on the books, the A and Rs after that point, even if we, they see that we've got the, the bylaw on the books, they're, they're gonna, they may be motivated now. But once we get the bylaw on the books, anything after that date, we're, we're, we have some more protections.
Right, but that's after that date.
After town meeting.
Right, which is exactly what happened the last time. It, you know, it, it was posted what was gonna take place, and before town meeting came about, we, we had, what, nine projects show up?
But that had nothing to do with the moratorium. That could still happen just because the bylaw is gonna be on the books.
Well, and that assumes that the AG likes the bylaw.
Well, that's a different problem that we face, but the bylaw becomes, if, if the AG approves it, the land use is protected as of town meeting. Doesn't have to wait.
Right.
So, for example, we're still waiting for the AG, um, to rule on 2022, but if she, and I'm gonna say she because it's Nicole, um, um, approves it, it goes back to town meeting of 2022. So, we were protected from that point forward.
Okay, alright.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm, I could go either way.
I, I just, you know, I am too. I think of confusing the crap out of, of myself, actually. So, I guess we'll just put it to a vote, and whoever wants to move it forward, I'm okay with it, and whoever doesn't wanna move forward with it, I'm okay with that, too. So, um, so the, so the, the request for motion would be, do we wanna move the moratorium forward and prepare it for town meeting and move it to the, the meeting of the 18th for further refinement?
Does it need a public hearing? Would that be the 18th?
Right, right, correct.
But that's, and it really is part of the discussion on the battery storage bylaw. I think we sort of, uh, have envisioned that as we're going forward. I, I guess my, my only question is, are we gonna have, if we don't have a moratorium, are we gonna have a bylaw? 'Cause I don't detect a lot of consensus at this point. I may... Yes?
You get...
Yeah.
You have to come up front, sorry. We need one of those big swing boom mics. Yeah, that'd be cool.
Have John run around.
That's funny, I never see you at the gym. Okay.
Sorry to interrupt the discussion. Very lively and, and thoughtful, thoughtful.
Re-identify yourself, please. Re-identify yourself, please.
I am Nancy McHale, Farring Hill Road.
Thank you, Nancy.
Precinct 5. Um, anyway, all of that being said, one of the things that a moratorium is going to demand is that the work actually be done. And there's already a lot of work that's being done. So unless someone or two people at the very least really hunker down, do all of the work necessary, you're gonna end up perhaps with a product that's not as good as you would have had otherwise. If you, you know, continue to refine and work the way you've been working, which is absolutely amazing, but sometimes working with, within those constraints of, a real deadline to have it done by a certain date doesn't necessarily make the product any better.
Thank you. Okay. So, I will put out to a vote, all in favor of moving the moratorium discussion to the 18th in preparation of a public hearing and be preparing it to, uh, be presented at town meeting. So, I would entertain a, a motion for that.
I don't know. I think maybe we should at least discuss it more.
I don't think further discussion will hurt. I think if on the 18th, after more public comment and more investigating on our part, especially with the fire department, which I'll, I'm happy to go talk with them about.
It's not a commitment to both either way.
Right, at that point, we can still decide not to move it to the town meeting, if, if, or move it, whatever.
So moved.
Second.
Wait a sec. So, we have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason, all in favor. Sherry?
Aye, and I just wanna say also, this'll give us a chance to talk with Rich Bowen about it as well, see what advice he has.
Good point. Mike?
Hi. Hi, I think, uh, it'll give us time to, uh, load up our magazines because it's gonna be a fight one way or the other.
Yeah, well, at least we're, we're prepared. I think that's, that's my main objective, is just to be educated and prepared as best we can. Uh, Jane?
Um, I think that it's good to continue the discussion, so aye.
Sam?
I think we need at least more discussion from the public and more discussion amongst ourselves, so aye.
Well, I think having it noted as a public hearing might spark some more participation, too. Carl?
Uh, aye, although I'll note, I was really hoping for a much larger turnout, as you know.
I noticed. Uh, and the Chair votes aye, so, uh, we will move this to the 18th, uh, for a public hearing and then go from there. The upcoming planning board schedule, we addressed already. Thank you, Carl, for that catch. Referrals, other business member comments. Then I would...
Good discussion.
It was an excellent discussion.
Yeah? Good presentation.
Uh, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason, all in favor. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next time, try to be a little more enthusiastic with that aye.